This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams and Councilman Avery are absent today. Councilman Engels?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful once again that you've allowed us to see another day. We ask that your hand be in the midst as these representatives of our great city make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. We ask that all things be done in decency and in order and we will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise. These things we ask in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're fortunate this morning to have the Job Corps, SGA, with us, Tom. We appreciate you bringing them.
Yes.
I hope we'll be good. And they're here to watch us operate and so we need to be doubly, doubly careful not to say anything that would make them think we weren't just perfect.
I don't think we'll have a problem today, Mr. President.
Just a statement.
Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting on August the 13th.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of August the 9th through the 15th.
So move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Unfinished business? No. Don't have any today. Nine is a resolution authorizing amendment to agreement between Jones, the city and Jones Blair, Waldorf and Tucker. This is to update plans and specifications to rebid the Year Brown Elementary's Safe Route School Project in the amount of $300. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Engineer, why don't you explain to this SGA students what this is all about?
Be glad to. This was a grant that was offered by the state of Alabama that was applied for by the school system and what it does is exactly what the name is, is it provides safe routes for kids to go to school. The money has to be spent within a mile of the respective school. This one was received by Year Brown Elementary. I believe the year that this was funded, they applied for all the elementary schools in the system. I believe that's correct. But anyway, this was the one that was awarded. We bid it and it came in high and so we are revising the plans to try to get it within our expense or our budget.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing annual service agreement with Motorola. This is for fiscal year 2014 and the amount is $10,162.02 per month. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Is the Chief here?
This is our communications with the Fire Department, Police Department and I don't know what else. It's an annual service contract we have with Motorola. That's it.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement between the city and the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for maintenance of paving, marking and sign during the construction of a federal aid rail and highway cross improvement project at the 12th Street Railroad Crossing. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is the crossing at 12th Street and Meegan that we're talking about and we'll maintain that once it's completed.
Once they put it in. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is an ordinance amending City Code Section 118 through 129 to designate the east side of State Street from 11th Street to the dead end as a no parking zone. The ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the Council will vote on it next week. New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution authorizing agreement with Edgewall County Commission for Stroud Avenue Drainage Phase Two.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, this is really just a correction that we had already passed an ordinance, passed a resolution back earlier this year on the Stroud Avenue Project Phase Two. Basically, there was some terminology in the agreement that had to be changed. Everything else remains the same. Simply remove the total Edgewall County Commission to designate one commissioner to take that part of the commission's share in the event that we should go over our budget. Did I do that right, Chairman?
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority, Manna, the Love Center, DGI, Way of the Cross, 13th Place, Family Success Center, Council on Aging, Summer Enrichment Program, and Edgewall County, Edgewall County Community Free Clinic. This is CDBG money in an amount of $87,700. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider this this morning.
Second.
What we're doing is actually okay and how many of them is it?
Ten.
Ten. This money will be split up between them. What each one of them get, I don't know.
It's in the CDBG's budget how much each one of them gets, so it's probably.
I can read the amounts if you want me to.
Yeah, read the amounts.
Each one of the resolutions has the amount. $12,500 for Commercial Development Authority, $18,000 for Manna, $3,000, I'm sorry, that's $5,000 for the Love Center, $12,500 for DGI Downtown Gadsden, I think I'm trying to turn two, it was, $12,000 for the Way of the Cross, $10,000 for 13th Place, $10,000 for Family Success Center, $1,700 with Council on Aging, $3,500 for Summer Enrichment Program, $2,500 for Community Care, Inc.
We get a CDBG grant from the federal government every year and these projects are for low and moderate income areas and we do a lot more than that because the money is almost a million dollars this year, I think.
Close to a million.
This is $87,000 of it, but it's a real good program that they try to cut out every year and cities from all over the country go up there and try to talk them out of it.
They have cut it. It was a million three at one time. I think we're a little less than a million now, so they are cutting away at it.
The Family Success Center building is one of the projects that we were able to build because of that and then we have the, is there anybody here from up there that can tell these people who some of the other projects are, I know there are two or three big ones out there, I believe one in East Gadsden.
We got street, we got paving, there's a whole lot of things that come into focus. Our main focus is to, it's a political football and every year we go through this, they try to cut us down, we go up there and try to, and get them to go back up, but if we could just talk to our own delegation, that would help. It really would. Because this is the most important grant that we've got coming into this city with the good that it does on drainage and paving and all the things that y'all noted that it did this morning.
And if you, if you want to participate in the program, you must apply and there are stipulations, you know, that have to be met, you know, before you can apply for CDBG funds. So if you're interested, you know, you need to call, you need to get in touch with Nick Hall, Becky, Henson, to see what the qualifications are for you to apply for some of these CDBG funds. But the fact is, you know, if you don't apply for them, really you will not get them, so. But then if you apply for them, you know, that still doesn't guarantee that you will get them. But obviously, it's just like the lottery, you know, you can't win if you don't play. Didn't mean that, John.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider all ten resolutions today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all ten resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all ten.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Citizens request Sheila Hurley, Edgewall Youth Advisory Council.
Yes, sir. We've got some handouts for you so you can know more about the youth council and about CED. I have several staff with me this morning and I noticed we have some members of our Edgewall Youth Council in the audience, too. There was an interest in starting an advisory council when there was a lot of concern because the Girls and Boys Club was closing and I know that, that's about to be remedied, that there's going to be a change with that. So as a result, a lot of people got together and started focusing on communication and what the kids need to know. So we formed the Edgewall County Youth Council and the city's been nice enough to give their space here, so we've been meeting here in your chambers. I hope that's all right. I know Councilman Harris has been here several times with us. The focus has been on communication because the reality is, there's a lot of things going on in our city, in our county, but people don't seem to have that information. Just this past Saturday, there was a meeting for the superintendents and the principals to get together and when we had our youth council meeting, we discovered that most people didn't know what was going on. So we had Pastor Simmons bring in the information and we had a representative from CED and some of the principals and superintendents and I believe the mayor actually went to that meeting as well. So it was what's surprising is, we have a lot going on, but we don't communicate very well. So you see that first item in your packet is the Facebook piece and there's a lot of things listed there so that the kids can go to that Facebook and they can find out about all the events going on. Now, some of the staff here like Darrell, come on Darrell, Darrell Richardson, he is, Darrell is our coordinator for prevention services and so he and Ms. Ava, most everyone knows Ava Gregory, who heads up our Substance Abuse Services, I'm sure can enlighten all of you about the youth council and some of those pieces. They've actually attached some of the events that they've had and some upcoming events and I have Phyllis Brooks, our clinical director, she's here today with us as well, and Felicia Mitchell, who's also one of our prevention specialists. But I'm gonna let Darrell guide you through some things in here and then I'll talk about CED for a minute, okay?
Like she was just saying, like we have a Facebook page set up for the youth to let them know about all the free activities that are going on in Gadsden as well as the one that you have to pay for. We have different stuff from like all over Alabama as well as, they have like a basketball league from, can y'all hear me? I'm sorry. They have like a basketball league coming out in Anniston where kids get to display their talent. We also have a Twitter page at edawayouth.com on Twitter. We have different upcoming events, like on A-28, First Baptist Church of Alabama City would be offering tutoring on Wednesdays from 5:00 to 6:00. We try to put as many things as we can that's going on in Gadsden on this page to communicate to the youth that we have, there are things out there to do besides just staying at home and not doing anything. We have a, our SAG conference coming up in 2013. We have a lot of good speakers coming up. We have Saran Stacey, we have Mr. Martin Houston and as well as town media guy. They help us with like different ways to reach the youth.
Absolutely, that's a good job, Darrell. The upcoming SAG conference is gonna be awesome. We do have Martin Houston, we do have Saran Stacey and his story is magical. He was hit by a drunk driver. His wife and all of his children but one were killed and that child was badly hurt. So he will be able to really share with our young people. Our Gadsden Conference is gonna be at Convention Hall. We would love all of you to be there. It's gonna be the 6th of March. We want you there. It's important for our young people. Also, the 10th of September, Bob Nguyen is the head of Substance Abuse Treatment and Prevention in the state. He's gonna be here, but along with him, we're gonna have a preview of multimedia. I understand it is on a Tuesday, but we're gonna be serving lunch, so after y'all finish here, we'd love you to come straight on over. We would love it. We need y'all and we appreciate all that y'all do for us. And we are having events most of the time twice a week now. We're doing one Wednesday, which is tomorrow, at the Housing Authority at Carver and then Thursday night, we're gonna be at the Carver Community Center doing an event.
So you can see that the council has been a voice for a lot of things that are going on with the youth. The reality is, a lot of people just have no idea what's out there or how to utilize it. So at CED, somebody missed a meeting and somehow I ended up chairman, let's put that way. But I'm the chairman and Ms. Ava's the vice chair of the council and the thing is, everybody's enjoying it at CED. We're not at CED anymore, just kinda staying in our, in our own house. We're in the, we're in the city limits every day doing some things. So you can see some of the things that everybody's trying to pull together for our youth and keeping them busy, but you'll also see that, you know, as we make these connections, we're involving the youth and the community and services and programs that they didn't realize was out there for them. For example, Tom and the folks from Job Corps, that's one of our new partners. We're doing things a little differently at CED and I have to put a plug in for us. The council has really come, brought everybody together and it's formed more partnerships for us and we have put a proposal before the city for funding and we hope that you will look positively on that because the reality is, we are here every day. We're trying earnestly to get back to the city limits so that we can have our programs physically housed here as well as provided here, but so much of what we're doing now is partnering with our hospitals, with our agencies in a way we've never done before and that's a good thing and that's getting other people involved, other 310 boards, everybody working in such a way that we're providing the services here in the city of Gadsden. For example, today, we have a person from the Department of Health, we have about 40 people being trained at our facility for substance abuse case management and they're coming from different parts of the state and they will be here with us today and tomorrow. And just like Ava mentioned, September the 10th, we'll have another person coming to the city of Gadsden at the Convention Hall to talk to us about substance abuse services. So we are going to have a large crowd there and we would love to have you participate. As things continue to change and you see some things in the newspaper, there are gonna be some cutbacks across the entire state and as each year goes, that state funding is gonna be rolled back a little bit more each time. So you may see CED doing things more in a businesslike fashion and that's not a bad thing, but also doing even more things here with your hospitals as we start closing down state facilities, so there's more services provided here in the city of Gadsden. We are truly contracting with Gadsden Regional Mountain View Hospital and we are partnering, like I said, with Job Corps and so many agencies in this city and we're now a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Who would've thought? So you'll see us in places you didn't think you'd see us before and that's all a good thing. We serve collectively over 4,000 people through CED. That's unduplicated county every year. So we're reaching more people and we're starting to make some bridges there between inpatient, outpatient, community services and the other programs. So we sincerely hope that you will see the reality that we are in Gadsden every day and we're part of Gadsden every day and we, don't be surprised if you see a building that we start to use in the near future because that's what we're striving for in the city. So please, if you have any questions about the youth council or CED, please ask away.
Ms. Sheila.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question to Brian first. Brian, if you had the schedule of all these events, could you not line them up to run every day of the schedule on the Channel 99?
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
You can get that to him. That runs 24 hours a day and it's free.
Fantastic, fantastic.
Good.
The more, the more support, the better. We're amazed at how much people just do not realize that's out there to utilize. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, marched by the mayor and the council. You wanna start, Mayor?
Yeah, I will. Couple of things I wanna talk about, you know, talking about mental health, they're cutting. It all starts up north in Washington and they take out the big scissors and it starts rolling downhill and when it hits Montgomery, it's going pretty fast and they take out the scissors and then when it gets to the municipalities and the counties, there's not a lot of money left anymore nowadays. But I wanted to say something, too. Yesterday, we had the SROs, Certified Policemen at every school, they were there with their automobiles and the lights going and they were at the schools all day. We had a little problem trying to come up with enough retired people. I think we got three or four that's pretty interested. We had a lot of conversation before it got started, but it got worked out and, you know, we do support the school system. Actually, I can say approximately since 2006, when I got in office of October, we've probably put somewhere around $12 to $13 million in the school system and every how they use some of it, you know, is up to them, but we do help them a lot and we're glad we got the SROs and we're gonna keep the schools safe no matter what we have to do. Thanks.
That is. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't take three terms, I won't take mine. The, we had our district meeting last night and attendance was well, was good and we had Shane Ellison from the mayor's office and we had the chief of police there and I just, I just continue to encourage those of you who are available to attend these meetings because we disseminate information and we gather information. So it's a good working relationship between the department heads and our communities and it's good for them to hear firsthand from the citizens what their concerns are rather than us trying to relay them, you know, from one point to another, but direct communication. They even get to get, they get to meet, as an example, last night, they were given the name and one of the patrol persons, patrol ladies, that patrol in our district, you know, was there and they, they know her by name now and they know where she patrols and where, and how to get in touch with her. So those are just positive things that we derive from having a district meeting when we communicate with one another. I encourage you to continue to come out and join us in those events when we have them each month in District One. PTO, Parent Teachers Association, PT, Parent Teachers Organizations. I had, I had gotten some, some, some information that a couple of our schools may have not had those organizations up and going in their schools. That's been remedied. There will be PTO, PTO organization in one of our schools that perhaps has the stigma of not being as, as good as it should be, the stigma. I'll tell you that Litchfield Middle School grades, the scores, came up. They have made tremendous progress, you know, since the last time that they were rated. So I want to encourage everybody that has any interest in your neighborhood, in your community, in your schools and your kids to support the PTO organizations in your schools, all of your schools, not just one, but it takes all of our community. Now, you don't have to be a parent of a child that's attending a school, you just have to be a concerned citizen to support those organizations. So I encourage you to support them. Please, please support those organizations. They're, they're very good for our community and that way we raise the expectation of all of our kids. We don't keep them at the level of expectation where they are, where they have been, but we raise it to the next level and then we can participate to help them attain that, that level. The other thing that I want to mention is the Backpack Initiative. That is up and going and running. It's a CED, Mental Health, NAACP, the city of Gadsden and other organizations are, have this program going and Sheila, when's that first day they're gonna do that first?
It's gonna be September. They're gonna roll it out, run it for holidays.
But after the holidays, sometime mid-September, they're gonna roll the program out for the first school and the Backpack Initiative is to send healthy food home for kids, with kids, on Fridays so that when they come back to school on Mondays, they would have been nourished and ready for school. It's kinda hard to sit there and pay attention to a teacher, concentrate on your studies, you know, when you're hungry. So we're, that's a program that, that is initiated and the city is partnering with these organizations to make sure that this program is successful. As it rolls out, it's gonna go, it's gonna start in one school, as funds are received, as supplies are received, it will be rolled out to two other schools, hopefully in the very near future and eventually the whole county will be involved in this process. So wherever you can, when you hear of this initiative, please participate, get, get involved so that we can do something for those kids, you know, who really need this, you know, over the weekend. We've got the Monday through Friday lunches, you know, breakfast and lunch in schools and we don't know what happens, you know, on Saturday, Sunday until Monday morning again. So thank you for your cooperation and for your support. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Tom, do any of your students have any questions they'd like to ask? If they feel free to ask them if they do.
Well, we'll, it's out of us, so I should have a person. I'm a summer student, but I will, we're, we're involved in this problem. And it's the SGA sponsoring the peer leadership coordinator, Job Corps does an outstanding job and they should be good, it's a great experience, I'll just tell you in 15 seconds what they, where they're headed, they lead Job Corps.
Okay, good. Why don't y'all come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you, 'cause all of you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Laquyn Davis. I'm SGA Treasurer. I took up the security trade at Job Corps and I sworn in to the US Army and I have a Sep, I have a leave date of September 10th.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. Military.
Yeah.
Hey, how y'all doing today? My name is Adam McLaurin, I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina, came into Job Corps, spent three years in the military, in the Army. I have my exit date, September the 27th, I got accepted into a mayor corps, I will leave for Denver, Colorado, October the 7th.
All right. Great.
Hello, I'm Casey Simpson, I completed the CNA and the Office Administration trade, and I start college tomorrow to become a registered nurse.
All right.
Hey, good morning, y'all. My name is Alexandra Walker, I'm the SGA vice president, I'm 80% in culinary right now, and when I do get done, I'm going to Gadsden State and do an early childhood.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Clara Garcia, I'm a transfer from Little Rock, Arkansas. I took CNA over there and took the advanced training here for human services, and I got offered a job in Pennsylvania as a staff member at a Job Corps, so I'll be leaving September the 4th.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Olivia Tucker, SGA secretary, I completed the security trade, now I'm taking CNA, after that, I'm going to college.
All right. Yeah. Great. We're happy to have you.
Yes.
Come back to see us any time. Bill?
That's outstanding young people, we're just real proud of all of you. I didn't like to hear the word, "I'm leaving, I'm leaving." Come back, please.
Come back.
It's the kind of citizens we need. I serve on the CED Mental Health Board, and just like to say, I'm real proud of the direction CED's going now, and getting more and more involved in the city, and hopefully we'll get more and more involved with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so proud of these young gentlemen and ladies that just came up here and said what they're gonna do. You never can go wrong getting an education and starting a working career, I appreciate everything y'all have done, appreciate the Job Corps, what they do. I was excited to hear that CED might be opening up a building in Gadsden.
I need you, brother.
I do, hey, that just tickles me, I was on the board at the town when they left Gadsden, I was really sad when they left and moved, and maybe we can get them back, it was a good sign, which you told us a while ago. I want to tell everybody, I appreciate them coming out to the music on, at Alabama City's gazebo this past week, we had about 80 or 90 people out there, and everybody had a good time, we've got one more third Saturday at the gazebo, which will be September, whatever third Saturday is, but we're looking forward to that, that's all I got.
Man.
Yeah, I'll be really sure, Tom, because I know y'all are hungry, it's 11:30, I think I'm getting that way, too, Jenny. I do want to touch on one thing, and I'm glad you brought that up on SRO, officers, but thank you, Chief, the first day of school was great. I never saw so many enthusiastic kids in my life, I never was that enthusiastic about going to school. I was always backing off, but they really were, and your police officers did a fine job up there, too. We've had a number of break-ins in my district, and I know all over town, Sherman, it's getting pretty bad, and I know we're trying to catch whoever's doing it, but I want to try to tell everybody that's listening to please be a nosy neighbor, if you can't be anything else, look out for your neighbor, look out for each other. If something out of the way is happening in your neighborhood, at least pass it on to the police officers and let them come out and check it. We've done it three or four times in my district, and it's ended up in arrests. So it's best if we go ahead and do that, and the police presence is getting better, and Chief, I want to thank you for that also, because it really, really is. But when they come around and kick your door in and grab your TV and run with it, and your credit cards and everything else, they're gone. Again, neighbor, watch after neighbor, you may not like him, but he might like you enough to watch out for you, so get with it and look out for each other, that's all.
Thank you, Ben. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion with...
Can I just mention one more thing?
Sure.
All these folks you saw here from Job Corps, if you look in your packet, August the 28th, at 4 o'clock at the Carver Village, the youth council will meet that day with love for all of you to come, because we're gonna be honoring some of the youth that you heard from today.
Okay.
And they're gonna be preparing a refreshment course.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
To move.
To move.[1764.63]